First up tonight, we have two proclamations. The first of which is the Child Abuse Prevention Month for April twenty twenty five. Whereas children are vital to Jackson County's future prosperity and quality of life. And whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable, nurturing and healthy homes and communities that foster well-being. And whereas child abuse in the lack is a publicly responsible, is a public responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life in Jackson County. And whereas child abuse, parents need support and resources to help cope with stress and nurture their children to grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed through partnerships created among citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, children's advocacy advocacy centers, law enforcement agencies and the business community. And whereas Jackson County is committed to preventing child abuse, calls upon citizens from all walks of life to increase their participation in efforts to support families and thereby prevent child abuse and strengthen communities. Now therefore, the Jackson County Board of Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Jackson County and commands its observance to all citizens. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
Second.
All of those in favor say aye. And none are opposed. Tonight, we have, I'm sorry, I've got a lot of papers up here. We have Crystal Jones from Awake, she's the executive director to accept this proclamation. So, Chris.
You want me to get the whole crew?
Please. You guys come home. We've also got a long portion of the bag, eight board members. And anybody else? A D A's?
I think this is good news. H C P helps out a lot with this. Thank you, guys.
All right. Now, we have another proclamation for Public Health Week. Whereas the week of April seventh through twenty twenty five marks the National Public Health Week. It's a theme that starts here, emphasizing the importance of making a positive impact in our homes, communities and state. And whereas the thirtieth anniversary of National Public Health Week celebrates significant achievements, including a dramatic decline in HIV AIDS-related tests for treatment advancements, allowing many with HIV to live full, healthy lives. A decrease in smoking rates from twenty-five point five percent in nineteen ninety-four to eleven feet four today. Republic awareness, smoking bans and tobacco taxes. A reduction in childhood mortality from thirteen point eight to five point four deaths per thousand life births, thanks to vaccines, improved healthcare and better nutrition. Progress in mental health care with more individuals receiving support thanks to expanded services and growing understanding of mental health needs. A significant reduction in childhood lead exposure from four point four percent to under five percent due to important policy changes. Increased recognition of how environmental factors like climate change can affect health with efforts like cooling centers and public health campaigns to address these concerns. Advancements in preparedness for health threats, including innovations like mRNA technology and global vaccine distribution. And whereas it is recognized that certain communities continue to experience health challenges due to factors like access to resources, environmental conditions and availability of healthcare services. Whereas public health organizations use National Public Health Week to inform policymakers, professionals and the public about ongoing efforts to improve health across the United States and whereas public health professionals play a vital role in supporting communities to prevent health issues, recover from emergencies and promote long-term wellness. And whereas ongoing support for public health efforts can help shift the focus from treating illness, combating disease and encouraging healthy living. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Jackson County, the April seventh through the thirteenth shall be designated as Public Health Week in Jackson County and call upon all residents to observe this week by recognizing the contributions of public health in improving the health of the county and promoting overall well-being for all, starts here. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
Come here.
And a second?
Aye.
All in favor say aye. None opposed. Tonight, we have our health director, Anna Lippers, coming to accept this proclamation. Moving on. First thing from tonight's agenda is the approval of the agenda. We do have one item to add on the new business. It is the contract purchase T N S properties. So with that amendment being made, I'll seek a motion for approval of the agenda.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
None opposed. All right, next up is the approval of the minutes from March eighteenth. If there's no need for any amendments to those minutes, I'll seek a lot of motions to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
None opposed. Moving on now to administrative reports. For me, I want to thank a few people for their quick response. Couple of weeks ago, a little more than, yeah, about a couple of weeks ago at Chloe Rec Center. Barney and Christie provided immediate lifesaving CPR for a gentleman who had a heart attack at the rec center. It's not just them, it's everyone at Harris that needs a great commendation. But especially the nine-one-one caller or the nine-one-one call center. All those people mobilized helicopters and ambulances and that man was in Asheville within thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, he survived. So, if y'all see Barney and Christie, make sure you you pass them on the back and tell them what a great job they did. If you know anybody at the emergency center, make sure you tell them they're doing a great job as well, because that's a that's a huge thing. With that, do you have anything else to report? Do any commissioners have anything else to report?
I think we other, I think all the emergency management personnel, firefighters that battled kitchen branch fires at Fisher Creek. And the Boston Lake last community state, they were called out to fire the started up on Parkway and water rock log. They got that contained pretty quickly and then spreads, we're thankful for that.
In the rain, and more coming, thank goodness. All right, I'll, moving on to the category report, Mr. King.
So just to bring a little updates. First of all, one of the comments about security at the library, we are, you know, a stakeholder group and trying to figure out going going forward, taking some of that security and and just looking at what we what we can do better. We're engaging F R L and our housekeeping staff to kind of go through that process and just want to let you know we're involved with that. Andy's been working, dealing with it on trying to come up with a policy on appointments to try to shift it from shift to June and December of each year and going through a policy where we have a a clear, you know, path for appointments. So during those two time periods, so we'll have that at the May meeting, May work session for your consideration. And the cancers area, we are looking at, look, working with C D C or civil design concepts to study the water and sewer in that area. So we're bringing a proposal back for you, probably next month, to try to get that kind of going, just to kind of look at at next steps on, you know, some of those issues up there. Kind of come up with best practice. As far as the projects, we've got several, I'll just I'll highlight a couple that are coming up this month. Department on Aging, you know, we've been kind of struggling with that. At our pre-bid meeting last week, we had no potential bidders, so we kind of went back out, so we had to get to kind of get on the on the line. Now we have five interested parties, so our new bid date is April the twenty-fourth. So hopefully, we will get three qualified bidders for that and then bring that back to you at the May meeting as well. Canada Fire Department, we had talked about utilizing a design to a concept, we're kind of so far along now in the process that we're just going to go with a traditional bid. And that will be done probably the end of May, that'll be when we get our documents completed. So that'll be first of June, hopefully, we'll have a bidder in place for that. The fairgrounds, we are working pretty much every day on on that. The footers will be done, will be started in April. Building is is there ready to be put up once we get everything going and we're working on water. We're working at Cherokee Water to try to figure out some the water system for the sprinklers and so we'll bring in more, more, more to come. And that's all I have right now. Any questions?
Question? Thank you. Moving into our public comment section, just remember that we do have a a time limit of three minutes. So just for everyone, if you could, just try and keep it within that that time period, I appreciate it. First up tonight is Casey Wallawinder.
Hi, Casey Wallawinder, I was here a month ago to ask for some more transparency in regards to the school board vote being made to make the Board of Education partisan without community engagement or feedback from the community or opportunity for the community to speak about that. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the gas station that's been approved to be built on one oh seven, right on the tuck. And again, I think there was a lack of transparency and openness ability, so I know that now people are kind of asking for feedback from the community, but I'm again, sad that we weren't given the opportunity to do that before. I'm not a scientist, I'm not a construction worker, I am a resident of Jackson County. I know how much these waterways mean to our community, to our families, to the draw for tourism, for locals. And I want to share some thoughts from a local biologist. He said, first and most important, that site's too close to the Tuckassee G River. I understand that Mr. Lewis has followed all rules and regulation regarding development of this of this site for a gas station, but our regulations in North Carolina are so lax that this is no comfort. That site is too close to the river, garbage and gas leaks will end up in the river. And I think at this point, it's also important just to talk about runoff and what that would look like. Lewis has already cut down the riparian zone and it will take years and years for that to grow back. Again, as a non-scientist, living with scientists, what I do know is that those riparian areas are natural filtration systems for our bigger waterways. Natural filtration systems that silt fences are not going, they're not going to do the same level of work. The Tuckassee, the Tuckassee G River is one of the greatest assets of Jackson County, humans use it for recreation and drinking water. It's a draw for locals and tourists alike, it's an integral part of our ecosystem and provides habitat for countless species. It's something to be celebrated and protected. Secondly, that site's dangerous in terms of traffic turning on and off of South River Road. I think most of us know that that already has limited visibility and there are a lot of concerns from the community. Some more thoughts to share, the traffic pattern, again, already feels dangerous. I think the community keeps saying that we don't want this gas station there, that we have grave concerns about this gas station there. Annie Fisherman will tell you, no one wants to look up from the water and see a gas station looming above one of the most treasured structures of the town. Again, that's something that's appreciated by locals, by families, by tourists. Even with all the precautions in the world, a spill or runoff issue this close to the river can have lasting consequences for native plants and wildlife. Again, we're talking about one gas station that could have grave impacts for years to come on our natural operating systems of Jackson County. And this area is marketed as a destination for outdoor tourism, placing a gas station right beside the county's most popular fishing spot sends a wrong message about what we value. And I I think that's true, I think we, as a community, I think most of us would agree that we love our mountains, we love our creeks, we love our rivers. And it's really sad to think about putting those at risk for a gas station. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dale Collins.
Good evening, my name's Dale Collins, resident of Webster, North Carolina, the big city, so to speak. Regarding future development, is what I'll call it, along the Tuckassee G River, common sense is a phrase I keep hearing amongst conversations of neighbors of Webster and other concerned folks in Jackson County. The development of gas stations, particularly along the banks of the Tuckassee G, is a threat to all of our economies of scale. Whether it's a restaurant, lodging, it it's a threat. Obviously anglers stand to suffer the most, but lackadaisical and apathetic planning and zoning are also a threat to this county. And as residents, citizens of this county and leaders in this county, we've got to do better. Untamed development along trout streams in Jackson County threaten the enjoyment and happiness of residents along those banks, not just the Tuckassee G River, it could be any creek. You take the fly fishing trail map that our chamber developed and it's it's amazing how many waterways we have in this county. So, and they all feed into the tuck, they certainly do. The trout fishing economic impact is tremendous, one point three eight billion dollars are spent in western North Carolina for trout fishing. Jackson County receives an enormous amount of support from the western north, excuse me, North Carolina Wildlife. And believe it or not, fly fishing guides and fly shops are not the leading winners on that list of one point three eight billion. It is lodging, hotels, cabin rentals. You go up and down Main Street Silva, you'll see who the winners are. It's boutiques, it's not just the the fly fishing industry. While there may not be much to be done with the current permitting situation and what's allowed to be happened already at this point on the banks of the Tuckassee G, I challenge this board to step up and address the process and means in which permits are approved on the banks of waterways in Jackson County. Thank you for the service of, thank you for your service to the citizens of this county and your time this evening.
Thank you, Dale. Julie Van Liever?
Hi, I'm Julie Van Lieven, from Webster also. And I just wanted to also talk about the controversy surrounding the gas station at the corner of South River Road and one oh seven. But also the bigger picture, then the predictable controversy over this gas station that's being built points to the need for stricter ordinances to protect our green space and our waterways specifically. But also our need, our county needs to take a good, hard look at planning for growth in the future. I would like for you, as the commission, to prioritize developing a path forward to adequately modernize the county's planning and permitting ordinances and processes. We need a plan to protect the natural resources that we share, that drive our economy and that are what we all love about our home here. Smart planning is a win-win for everyone. It is crucial to find a way forward into the century, into the century, prepared for growth that's coming our way. We know we're growing and we need to be careful before what we have and take for granted is lost or paved over or polluted or becomes just another generic small-town strip highway without character or beauty. We need to keep Jackson County as beautiful and pristine and charming frankly, as it is now going into the future. And you commissioners are the body that can drive us in the right direction. There is a way forward that can address both aesthetic and economic interests. But it requires cooperation among the stakeholders and a lot of hard work. As my commissioners, I ask that you be forward-thinking and take on this commitment. To start by establishing a working group with business owners and citizens, environmental experts, planners, urban planners, green space planners and county government to work together to establish a big picture of how our towns and our our county will look in the twenty-first century. And then to codify how development will be allowed to happen. If you drive this work, you will be honored into the next decades as heroes. Your legacy will be solidified and the gift will be bestowed on all of our children and all of our grandchildren and all of the generations to come. This is a priority now and you cannot pull it off. It needs to happen this year and I think if you put it on the top of the list, it can get done. And I appreciate your efforts as commissioners. And I appreciate your efforts as commissioners, and I value your power that you have to make change, and I appreciate you considering what I have to say, and thanks for letting me speak.
Miller Watson?
Thank you for having me. My name is Miller Watson. I'm the owner of a fly shop, a service fly shop in Asheville, North Carolina, that opened its doors in 1985. I've lived here for 18 years now. I'm a graduate of Western Carolina University and a North Carolina native. I studied parks and rec management with a focus on commercial recreation and fishery management. I'm here today to take a stand for transparency moving forward on developments like the Lewis Gas Station that has been approved along and adjacent to the Tuckassee G River. My concerns for this project are as follows. As a local business owner and fishing industry professional, I can wholeheartedly confess that my business and many other businesses in the outdoor industry are hurting right now after Helene specifically. Our businesses rely on rivers and watersheds that have been heavily affected by Hurricane Helene, and in the midst of cleanup efforts and all that we're doing to fix our watersheds, this feels like very challenging approval. Our hands are full enough without having to battle gas stations being built. Since the storm, my team, along with many other industry professionals in western North Carolina, have worked day in and day out on river cleanup projects to recover from Helene. Helene ripped through our watersheds, our riparian zones, our communities. The storm damage that our streams faces in many ways unparalleled. The riparian zones on these streams have become fragile and forever changed. Many of the riparian zones that were affected are just like the streamside area that this project has been approved on. No one thought Helene would rise to the levels that it got to and work on the flood levels like it did. Many think that the river will not reach or flood this gas station, but at what cost is this worth risking? Since the storm, my staff and many other anglers in the community have been working hands-on with the EPA, the French Broad River Keeper, Haywood Waterways, the Watershed Association of the Tuckassee G River, other local organizations, and more to clean our rivers of gas canisters, propane tanks, and in many cases, large underground holding tanks swept away by the storm, just like the one that's been approved and installed on this site adjacent to the Tuckassee G River. As a local business owner that operates a guide service that hosts upwards of 200 anglers a year on the section just below the Lewis Gas Station project, I'm expressing that the placement of this large underground gas tank and the construction of a convenience store adjacent to the Tuckassee G River could not come at a more inappropriate time or be placed in a more inappropriate location. This location is right in the middle of eight existing gas stations within a small stretch of the Tuckassee G River, from Caney Fork General Store to the BP exit at 81 in Dillsborough. I speak on behalf of myself, many other fly fishing industry and outdoor industry professionals that make up our $1.38 billion North Carolina fly fishing industry. There are 20 to 100 do-it-yourself fly fishermen and anglers below those five miles at that gas station every day. My guide service alone places upwards of 200 anglers a year, with Dale Collins, Bobby, Kyle Bronrath, Jason Cole, many of the other industry professionals in this area. We put upwards of 1,000 anglers on that river every year. They start their mornings at our fly shops and our coffee shops and around the greater western North Carolina area, hearing about the beautiful section of the Tuckassee G River that makes its way from Locust Creek Boat Ramp to CJ Harris, a section of river that will now experience a dramatic negative change to its biophilic aesthetic. Those that approved and allowed this project have painted a clear and vivid picture that they're willing to risk the well-being of an industry that the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission deemed a $1.38 billion impact on the state's economy. For every dollar spent on trout fishing, there was a $1.93 return to the state economy, a return that is now potentially affected by builds just like this gas station. I beg of this commission to consider this moving forward, and please understand the detrimental aspects that are in scope of builds like the Lewis Gas Station on 107. Thank you.
Wes Buchanan?
Hey, my name's Wes Buchanan. I got preceded by some guys that were very eloquent with what they said, so I don't really need to say much else, but I will tell you a story. I am one of the guys that works with Miller, for Miller. I've worked for Dale with them. I was one of the guys that did cleanup with EPA on a lot of the watersheds. I'll tell you, we got super lucky. We missed that storm by maybe 50 miles, maybe less, maybe more. The places that had sites like the Lewis Gas Station or more frequent, you know, sort of sensitive sites, I mean, we were pulling gas tanks out of those rivers from half a mile away. The gas stations weren't even close, and you're pulling their tanks out of the rivers. Like everyone has said, there's a lot of focus on the economic value of that river, and I share my concerns with a lot of my colleagues that this is a pretty ill-advised or maybe, you know, less than ideal situation for people like us in the industry. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet, and I'm just going to say, I hope that, you know, we don't go through another storm. But with them being more frequent now than they've ever been, I don't think we can deny we've had a couple of generational floods back-to-back-to-back in less than maybe 10 years. I don't think it's going to get less frequent. I don't think we can bank on it being less frequent, and I think it's slightly irresponsible to maybe not allow the public to chime in on stuff like this. So from a guy that's cleaned up a lot of these rivers and pulled gas tanks like the ones they're proposing out there, and we just can't guarantee that something's not going to happen. And I guess my closing statement, I want to say, I live on Old Culloway Road, right there at the intersection. I was there when the flood hit. I promise you, you could put your hand on the ground right there and feel it shake. So it wasn't going to take much more for that gas station if it was there to get ripped out of the ground. I mean, we had guys that worked at Duke Energy calling us saying, hey, man, like, not a guarantee, but this dam was looking a little sketchy. You might want to check that out or maybe seek some shelter or something like that. No guarantees, but okay, bye. Then the surface is gone. Something like this happens, and we get a 40-mile shift in the storm, and that gas station is getting picked up all down North and South River Road, and then we don't have a fishery. So I just want there to be a little bit more concern for stuff like that, where we've already outlined the economic impact of that situation. So, thank you.
Kate McKittrick?
Hello, my name is Kate McKittrick. I live in the Webster ETJ. The Tuckassee G River is not far from my home, and I enjoy the privilege of seeing the river and its inhabitants most days. I'm here to comment on the plan to construct a gas station and convenience store at the corner of South River Road and 107. I appreciate the opportunity to share my ideas. I was astonished to learn recently of this project, but I want to start by saying that I believe Mr. Lewis has tried to be responsible. He clearly considered the business prospects. He also considered the potential environmental impact, but only from the perspective of one who has already chosen to build. I believe such a project should never have been undertaken at this site. Let's consider the impact of storms in western North Carolina over the last 20 years. Back-to-back Hurricanes Frances and Ivan in 2004 caused widespread damage. Tropical Storm Fred exacted a heavy price in Haywood County in August of 2021, including the loss of six lives. I have read that at least one of the safeguards in place for the Lewis development is built to withstand a 25-year storm. The article in the Silver Herald about this project mentioned that the water from Tropical Storm Helene did not come anywhere close to the land on which the project is being built. Let's remember that initial forecasts suggested that Jackson County might take a direct hit from Helene, and we all breathed a sigh of relief when the storm turned at the last moment. Imagine the impact of a direct hit on the business that is under construction. It's important to acknowledge that there will be more storms, and they will be more severe, and we need to plan for that. I feel like people have spoken to that very eloquently already. All of us are familiar with risk-benefit analysis. We make them every day. Usually, we are weighing the risks and benefits to ourselves. I recognize that Mr. Lewis is an entrepreneur and is taking risks, but he is not the only one facing risk. In this situation, it's Mr. Lewis who may benefit, but all of us who are exposed to potential risk. I'm here to, number one, state my opposition to the granting of the permit for this project. Number two, state my opposition to a permitting process that does not include those who face significant potential risks such as contamination of drinking water and loss of river-related tourism. And number three, ask you, our county commissioners, to take responsibility for making sure that this does not happen again. I support the creation of a comprehensive Jackson County Plan for Smart Development by a group that involves all stakeholders, including people who rely on the Tuck for drinking water, fishing, boating, and others whose businesses depend on a clean and beautiful river. We have recently experienced the loss of multiple businesses, at least partially, as a result of inadequate planning related to the 107 corridor. Let's learn from that experience. Now is the time to be proactive and take control of our future by prioritizing protection of our natural resources as we shape the development that is surely coming our way. Thank you for your consideration.
Brett Riggs?
I appreciate the opportunity to address the board of commissioners here, and I don't want to echo the very cogent statements that have already been made concerning the development of Mr. Lewis's gas station there on 107. I do want to raise my opposition to that for, I think, very obvious reasons. That is a spot that is in danger in future storms. Mr. Lewis has stated that when he inspected the site during Hurricane Helene flood in the Tuckassee G, it was fine. I don't want to refer to the 1940 flood that wiped out Culloway. It crested 20 feet above the Culloway Dam. That site would be completely destroyed. Hurricane Helene just gave us a little tap on the shoulders that passed by. I just went through the Pigeon River gorge and saw the flood that did I-40. There would be nothing left of a gas station there at that intersection or River Road or anything along River Road if we had experienced a flood like that. So the development of this is all of us, and I encourage you to reconsider that, but also echo a predecessor's call for more stringent planning, public hearing process to control this into the fact of law here. I'm going to close with a, just like this, a note. I'm not from Jackson County, you probably know from my name, but I'm 10th generation North Carolinian, I'm proud of that. I grew up in a place where we could get water out of the ranch for drinking. We could eat the fish we caught. We could eat what we grew in the garden. We could eat the game we killed. But because there was not stringent oversight in planning and control over development, that whole area is being overtaken with polluting industry, which is so horrible. You can't drink your water out of your well. You can't eat the vegetables out of your garden. You don't even want to touch the fish down there. This is one of the few safe, green places that we have left. We only get one chance. We don't get due notice on this, and so I encourage you to strengthen the process of our design and planning here and not let things like this happen that everyone would find. Thank you.
Jim Whitaker?
Hi, my name's Jim Whitaker. I live off South River Road, about halfway down Catasfly in a little subdivision I call Lewis Landing. And I'm kind of here representing everybody in my little subdivision group that couldn't make it. And besides the obvious concerns about putting the gas tank 50 feet from the river and the aesthetics of all that and the damage to all the fishing and waterways and what problems that might cause, that particular intersection is very dangerous. My mother got in a wreck there, and I found out through Texas from my little group, that three or four people in our eight health subdivisions have all been involved in wrecks. And I can't see how the gas system there is going to make it any safer on that particular intersection. And I think we should use a little common sense here. Do we really have to put that gas station right there, right by the river? There's no other place they could have found for that, especially after we just had this hurricane that caused so much damage in this area? I think we're lacking foresight there. So I just wanted to express my opposition to this, Bill. Thank you.
Georgia Ennis?
Hi, my name's Georgia Ennis. Thank you for making time for us to share our thoughts about this issue this evening. I want to echo many of the comments that have come before me more eloquently and with better preparation. I am an environmental anthropologist, and I do my research in the Ecuadorian Amazon, kind of where the oil begins, and I have seen numerous supposedly well-planned projects that ultimately lead to the contamination of rivers in that region. And I am very concerned about the decision to place oil infrastructure in the form of a gas station on one of the pristine riverbanks here in Jackson County. You can probably tell from my name and from my accent that I am not from around here, but I feel very fortunate to live in this beautiful place, and I think that we can all appreciate the issues that could emerge from this kind of project and the potential environmental dangers that really could occur. As others have pointed out, this part of the river system did not flood extensively during Helene, and in the future, we really don't have guarantees that we won't be affected in the same way as places like Yancey County and other regions that did experience some of those really extreme impacts from the storm. So I would like to express my opposition to this project on environmental grounds, as well as the safety grounds that people have raised, as well as just the aesthetic and green space issues that really emerge from this sort of unregulated development in otherwise untouched areas. So I would urge the commission to reconsider their approval of this project and also to be more transparent about zoning decisions in the future. So thank you so much.
Bobby Bennett?
I guess the good thing of being one of the last ones, you don't have to say as much. So many people have said, I'm going to echo what they said. I'm in opposition to the gas station being built there and also changing some of the way that things are done in the public process and the way that things are planned from the county's standpoint for development in the future. I think it is important to be responsible with it. Hurricane obviously was a big thing. I think we can all agree that it could happen anywhere, not just here, not just in North Carolina, but any state can have a devastating thing like that. So it's not just this river. It could be any river anywhere where something like that can happen. So I think it is smart to be responsible about it. One thing that wasn't mentioned with the riparian stuff and all that for the buffer, you know, we're talking about removing some of that. Part of the habitat for a stream, whether it's for the fish, which are also food for birds, is that provides shade. So everything they cut down, it took shade off the river, which warms the water up, which is not good for the invertebrates, which is what the fish eat on, and then so, ecology of the whole system. Another thing is the runoff. It's not about, the fuel supposedly is mitigated, which is fine. And I'm just talking about the fuel that gets spilled, and then, you know, you get a rain shower, and it runs into the gutter. We've all seen that, where you see that sheen across the pavement. It's more about the water temperature. Every time we build a park, the water temperature in the rivers go up because you have warm water from the pavement that is substantially warmer than the water in the river. So it elevates the temperature. So I would encourage you, in former plans for any building, to maybe look at permeable pavers as an option. And basically, the water goes through the paper system into a retention area, cools it off to a ground temperature, before it's released into a river, stream, branch, whatever it is. So everybody with a good eye with the comments, I echo a lot of the stuff that was said, and just want to put my name in the hat that there's opposition to it for sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I know some of the things that, you know, this is great feedback for us in terms of how we set up planning and how we can really make it more transparent, so we'll work towards getting that accomplished with Towne Silva, with our Planning Council, and moving forward. We'll hopefully have a little bit better issues with communication in terms of getting that out there. Thank you all for coming. Moving on to our new business, we have the annual child fatality prevention report. And Ms. Lippard?
I wish I could have waited a minute, but I'll be able to. Good evening Commissioners, it's great to see many familiar faces and to meet those of you I hadn't had the pleasure of meeting yet. I'm Anna Lippard, Health Director for Jackson County, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight. I'm here to present the annual child fatality prevention team report for 2024. This report summarizes all child deaths from 2023 in Jackson County and provides recommendations for prevention. As Health Director, I present this report annually to our Board of Health and this board to advocate for system improvements and resources that can help prevent future child deaths. Our local child fatality prevention team is made up of representatives from multiple agencies. We have Police Department, DSS, Law Enforcement, District Attorney's Office, healthcare providers, medical examiner, AWAKE, PIA, Guardian Ad Light, HEDSTART, Jackson County Public Schools, and EMS. I could chair this team alongside Chris Weatherford, DSS Director, and as directed by statute, it's this board that's responsible for appointing those members that serve on our local team. All right, I'm going to scroll down here. In 2024, our team reviewed six child deaths for Jackson County from 2023. The state is always a year behind, and so our reviews are also a full year behind when the death happened. The report provided for you summarizes the age groups and causes of death for those for 2023. One case is still under review, and it's noted as pending in the report. I'm going to scroll down here. No system problems were identified in the cases that were reviewed this year, meaning that there's no formal recommendations from our team for changes that we would like to You can see here in the table, we had one child death for an adolescent, and that was a result of a car accident. The starter indicate that this is the one case that is still pending and under review. Next, we see we had two deaths in the age ranges from five to 12 years old. One was a result of cancer, and the other was a result of genetic disorder. For the infants, those that are less than 30 days old, we had three deaths. One was from extreme prematurity, and two were from other, and this is because the death was either unexplained or undetermined by the medical examiner. Many of the cases that are classified as other include something called sudden infant death syndrome, you might have heard it, SIDS. Well, understand that discussing child deaths is never easy. It's not a topic that any of us would like to address. However, it's these conversations that are essential because they allow us to learn from each of these cases, identify areas where improvements can be made, and ultimately work to prevent future tragedies. While the findings this year did not indicate system issues, the continued work of our team, along with prevention efforts in our community, ensure that we're doing everything that we can to protect the children of Jackson County. On a lighter note, with presenting this report, I do also get to highlight some of the accomplishments of our local team over the last year. We're fortunate enough to benefit from having a local Safe Kids Coalition here in Jackson County. They're really our boots on the ground for educating and preventing future child deaths, educating the community, excuse me. In 2024, Safe Kids participated in 29 community events, serving nearly 8,000 community members. This coalition helped establish permanent cards, check-in stations at our emergency management center, and five local fire departments, excuse me. And lastly, our community is preparing for legislative changes to the statewide child fatality prevention team. These changes will alter how we review and report cases moving forward. I thank you for your time and for your ongoing support of our work, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding our local team or this report.
Questions from the board?
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have Tiffany Paul, the detention captain, to discuss the jail medical plan.
Good evening, hi Tiffany Paul, I am the jail administrator. In collaboration with Health Director Anna Lippard, Attorney Deborah Bechtel, and the jail doctor, Dr. Pollan, have revised the detention center medical plan according to the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare and the North Carolina Administrative Code, and the statute does require that it be adopted by the governing body. I believe all of you have got a copy of that as well.
Were there any major changes?
There were several major changes. It was, I don't think it has been rewritten since 2017.
Oh wow.
So.
Is there a need for a vote on this tonight, I'm assuming? Is there a motion to approve Ms. Paul and Ms. Lippard's work here for our new jail medical plan? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed?
Thank you.
One question. Good question. Can we get a summary of the major changes that happened?
There is honestly, it's so long, and we basically, Deborah and I basically started from scratch, for the most part.
This is the new plan.
This is, you could pretty much say it's totally new.
Perfect.
Yes.
Moving on now, we have our added item, TNS hardwood, and the offer to purchase. And Mr. King?
So back in, making the limber, the board voted to put an offer in on TNS hardwood, and during that process, we did it in a closed session, but basically we talked about it in open sessions, just never did take a formal votes. This is the formal vote process, so we are ready to close on the property. And we need to do it through the formal process. It's 3.7 million for 46 acres, I think 46 acres.
What was the findings about the soil?
We went to phase one environmental, getting ready to do a phase two, but nothing at this point is going to be prohibit us from doing the industrial development we're looking to do.
Yeah, this is going to be a big benefit for the county.
No other encumbrance on the deed or anything?
No. No, everything checked out, everything's good.
Does this need to be a roll call vote?
Either way.
It's fine. Is there a motion to approve the contract for TNS hardwood's property?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to legislation and the Webster Village Bond Indukment Resolution 25, R25-09.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Clausen, I'm the Project Development Coordinator for Givens Communities, and this is Teresa Stevens, our Vice President of Affordable Communities. Thank you very much for having us this evening, and your ongoing support for the overall Webster Village development. We are here tonight to request a vote on bond inducement. Kristen Kirby, the Bond Counsel, is in the internet space. Viarali, thank you for attending. You have a packet of information that includes the resolution itself, a letter of intention from Givens, and a flyer about the Givens portion of Webster Village's development. In addition to being able to induce the bonds, this resolution also plays an important role into our low-income housing tax credit application to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and is also required by various private foundations in showing support from the local community. We're happy to answer any questions about the inducement process itself. The lawyer will be able to do that piece. We're happy to answer any questions about the project itself. And again, thank you so much for your ongoing support.
I do have one question. If all boxes are checked, when is estimated start and completion?
So, that's a great question, because there are a lot of moving pieces. As you know, HUD, we applied for the HUD 202 award, which they provide us, which we got it. Right now, we're in the underwriting process. We have until August 17th to get all the documents to them. There are some additional months that it takes for their lawyers, and our lawyers, and all the other lawyers involved to do their lawyer things, but we are hopeful to begin construction by the end of the first quarter, early second quarter of 2026, with the opening happening hopefully 18 months or so later. Yeah, we, any other questions?
No, I'm just excited about it. I remember when y'all come, it's been, what, about a year ago, a year and a half?
A little over a year.
So, glad to see it back up here, and glad to see some work being done on it, so. I like the timeline that you're putting out there.
2027 is going to help a lot of people.
Yeah, it's going to help the elderly, the seniors out, and a whole lot, so. We need that in our county.
With that, is, are there any other questions from the board? If not, I'll seek a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
And a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Chairman Leighton?
Yes.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Okay, so moving on now to appointments for the ABC Board. We have one and Chair. Tonight, the appointment is for Donald Ferguson as a member of the ABC Board. Mr. Ferguson is already an active and valuable member of that board, and then that is a three-year term. And then also, the appointment of the Chairperson, which would be a reappointment for a one-year term to Mr. Nolan. And should there not be any objections, I'll seek a motion for approval. Those are three appointments. Is there a motion?
I don't know them, but I guess if nobody, if they didn't have any problems with them being on there before.
I did, but it seems like they've been on the board forever. Changed out, so it's more like, you know, boards are supposed to be fluid, and.
Not term limits on there.
Well, there's.
Well, do you want to, there's three years, but do you want to wait and see if we get some more people that might want to be on the board? We can table it.
They don't expire until June 30th.
Yeah, we've got some time. Let's table it.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion to table this.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right, moving to our planning board. We've got one open position from the Supers District, and we've got one application for Simon Ward. So, is there a motion to approve Simon Ward? He's a retired airline pilot, current flight instructor, previous teacher. It's not required for them to come in and talk, it's.
Yeah, but it will be.
Only required that they fill out the application.
Yeah. It's your.
So you're kind of like.
It's your vacancy.
I don't, I don't know the gentleman, and he could be great, but I have no idea about him.
So do we table this one as well?
Yes.
Is there a motion to table the planning board?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Any questions from the press tonight? We do have a need for a closed session. Do you want to do that now?
Work session, if you'd like to.
Let's hold off and do it in the work session. With no further business, our work session will immediately follow this one if you folks want to hang around for our work session. If not, I'll seek a motion for adjournment.
So move.
And a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Recession.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here this afternoon or this evening to share information. I wanna introduce, most of you probably know Cy Simmons. He is our deputy director and also supervises the HUD department. And we just wanna kinda update you on some challenges we're having with our section of real assistance. And I don't wanna get too far in the roots and I hope I can... Figure out how to do this here. Let's shop if I can't do it. I don't wanna get too far in the roots, but I just wanna give you a little bit of information on Section 8. What Section 8 is, is a voucher program. And we have 1,004 vouchers for Haywood and Jackson County. And a voucher is something that we give to income-qualified recipient to send, we send a supplemental rental payment to a landlord to help them afford rent in the county. And so, we administer that for both Haywood and Jackson Counties. Over the last few years, we've experienced a lot of challenges with rental prices in our community. And so, we put a lot of information in here. If you really look at May of 2023, you really start seeing rents in Haywood and Jackson County really start growing rapidly. The next slide will show you our cost per unit. That's the average cost of the rental assistance payments that we provided. In January of '22, you'll see that was $466. By March of this year, it's $746. So, you can see how much additional rental assistance has been required over the last few years. So, just a little bit of flavor here. Back in August of 2024, last year, right before the hurricane hit, HUD contacted us and said, "Your agency, Public Housing Authority, is in a shortfall situation." And basically what they said, "In years past, this wouldn't have been an issue. We would've given you more money, but we've had federal cuts. And so, you cannot lease up, replace any vouchers that you lose." And so, they have frozen our real assistance department completely. They do not predict we will be out of this situation in the entire year of 2025. So, that's creating a great hardship for lower-income residents, our elderly, our disabled. We've posted examples of some of the clients that are on our waiting list. So, you have, we're gonna handouts for everybody, but you can see, you can pass those around and see some of the situations of the folks that really need assistance. We have people living in barns. We have people double housed. So, Todd may be over here and I don't know where I was going. So, basically, we're in a standstill situation. In October, we closed the waiting list. At that point in time, we had 552 applications. 137 of those were in Jackson County. And at that time, have been waiting over 200 days for real assistance. We keep going. So, that's kind of a snapshot of where we were in August. Here's you some demographics, households with children, 44%. Elderly families, 25 families, 15%. And then we've got homeless families that continue to be homeless in this. The next slide will show you basically the income guidelines of somebody who applies for real assistance and their qualifications. So, that's a little bit, kinda gives you a snapshot of how much the yearly income is for somebody. The next example, the next slide will show you the fair market rent in Haywood and Jackson County. So, a one-bedroom unit in Jackson County and Haywood County is $1,250 a month. So, for somebody who's a lower-range earner, it's really a hardship. And we're seeing families having to make really hard decisions about, do we eat? Do we do, you know, hard decisions. We've got houses that, families that are double housed and more than one family living in a household, which I never think is a good ideal, which is gonna lead to more problems down the road. So, you know, this is really the verge of the housing crisis that I feel like is coming. These numbers do not include anything after the storm. And I've looked at the economic impact of what the storm has done to Western Wisconsin, tourism, tax revenue. A lot of people have lost a lot of employment, especially in our tourism area since the storm hit. And it basically has made this housing situation much, much worse. So, there's your breakdown of Jackson County. And we track, yeah, right there. And so, we track calls, every call that comes into our organization, on things that we can help people with. And so, I wanna go to the next one. You can stay right here. And in Jackson County, we're getting 10 to 15 calls a week for needing help with real assistance. And just so you know, Mountain Projects, we do a lot of fundraising. We write every grant that comes our way. We try to put Band-Aids on people out of our donations and our resources. If we can avoid homelessness, we do. We know how much it costs to rehouse somebody once they become homeless. And of course, especially in our county's west of here, Tropical Storm Fred, Helene, Canton Paper Mill closing, which affected Jackson County residents. These are all things that's just been piled in over the last few years, couple of years. So, there's, we have advocated to HUD, have talked to senators directly. Our Board of Commissioners in Haywood County, the Sunday after Helene hit, was in touch with HUD. We have not been able to get this shortfall status overturned. I don't wanna be missed doom and gloom, but I felt like as elected officials in Jackson County and our leaders, you needed to know what we're seeing and the housing crisis that I feel like is coming. I would say if you have any contacts with any elected official on the federal level, to please advocate that they unfreeze our funding. Haywood and Jackson County is not like any other housing authority in this country. You can't tell me anybody else has been through a major mill closing and two catastrophic weather events, back to back within a three-year period. So, HUD should treat us a little bit differently, but they won't listen to us. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. That's just kind of a summary. Again, this is just for information, like, you know, what's going on and what we're seeing in our concerns. Do you have anything to...
Pretty well. It definitely is a need. Any questions from the board?
Appreciate what y'all do down there. Y'all assist, you know, parts of my family. If it wasn't for the HUD Department, they wouldn't have a place to live, so... It's very sad to see.
I just have one question. Do you have troubles finding Cy sometimes, like, 'cause he's so short?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I had a hearing now, so he'll have to translate for me, so...
I said, I just wondered if you had trouble finding Cy sometimes, 'cause he's so short.
Yeah, I lose him constantly. Yeah.
I have one question. Will the new facility out in Webster, will that help?
Oh, gosh, tremendously. And thank you so much for your ongoing support of that project. It will absolutely make an impact. Jackson County Aunt Teresa's here and she can quote the numbers better than I can about the housing deficit, which has recently been updated by the same group to the original one for the Dogwood Health Trust. And it indicates even further housing crisis in Jackson County. I'm sure you probably know this. I don't wanna give you information that you don't know. But a part of that study showed the average home sale in Jackson County was $786,000. So, that kinda puts in perspective what's out of reach. But Jackson County's housing deficit continues to grow. But that, the property, Webster Partnership, will definitely make an impact on that.
You know, it's sad to see all these, these different folks that can't find a place to live. But it really breaks my heart to see seniors without a place to live because, you know, many, many of them have worked their entire lives. And, you know, now they're facing, they can't find a place to live. They have to choose between a meal or housing or if their power bill. That just really breaks my heart.
Some of the seniors we see do not make $1,250 a month. And that's the average cost of a one-bedroom in this county.
Yeah.
So, Givens' data is really gonna make an impact for seniors.
Remind me, what is the age for the Givens program?
So, the HUD program is 62 and older, but the tax credit apartments, which is half of them, 60, is 55 and up.
Well, that's good. That serves a wide range then.
All of these seniors are being pushed out of their homes that they may have lived in 30, 40 years because of the economic conditions.
Well, that's right. I mean, you look at, they've been paying one set price for years. And then now with the economy and everything, homeowners are jacking the prices up.
Insurance is up.
We will continue to work to provide housing. We will continue to fundraise and, you know, help people. Make sure that we try to avoid as many evictions as we possibly can. And maybe Webster Partnership as fast as we can.
Mountain Projects has helped a lot of families in Jackson County. And continue to do so.
Yeah, and let me just say, one thing about the housing issue is not really homeowners jacking the prices up. It's the people coming in here and what they're willing to pay. I mean, it's just crazy.
But we can't control that either.
Yep.
I can't speak for the whole board, but I speak, you know, for myself. If y'all ever see something that y'all need or that we can help you with, don't hesitate to come to us because...
Well, we appreciate it. We appreciate it. We try not to ask for anything we don't need, but we certainly will. Thank you. We appreciate that. We appreciate all you do to serve our community. We appreciate all you do to serve our community. Thank you.
Up next, we have a library report from Ms. Fitz Morris.
I'm not going to have anyone steer for me up here. Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here to speak about the libraries that we have in our county. Sir Anthony Richards did want to be, be here, can you hear me? Yeah. But unfortunately, was unable to be here tonight. So I'm going to run through some slides. There's a lot of information there. And if you have any questions while I'm doing it, please jump in, or you can ask them at the end. So as you know, our beautiful Jackson County Public Library is open six days a week here in Silver. Bylaw and staff can also work Friday and Saturday nights or Sundays if they're needed because people book the, a lot of people want to get married there or have birthday parties there and all of the, all of the celebrations. And so we work with our staff to make sure those are covered. I will say, I go to a lot of meetings across the state and in the southeast region. And when people here, where I work, they're, they're glass because they've seen pictures of our library. We also have a beautiful library in Cashes, the Albert Carlton Cassius Community Library. The library celebrated thirty years last year, nineteen, nineteen ninety four. I was there at the groundbreaking because I'm ancient and I've worked here forever. The Cashes Library is still open only five days a week. So I would really love for the community, the community asks often, why can we not be open on Mondays? Like the one in Silver. So future plans, I would love to work on seeking funding in the next year or two to try and make that a reality for the people in Cashes. As you know, because you've spent hours working on our long-range plan, not long-range plan, regional agreement, the two new commissioners missed all that fun. Are, we are part of the Fontana Region Library System, which covers Jackson, Macon and Swain. And our mission statement is to provide the public of Jackson County, Jackson, Macon and Swain Counties with excellent service, convenient access to resources for their educational, informational and recreational needs. We have a pretty amazing number of cardholders in Jackson County. We have thirty five thousand and thirteen, that was it, as of the end of February. That's seventy nine percent of the population. And that is a pretty impressive number when you think about more, nearly four fifths of this community has a library card.
Excuse me, are these numbers, are they cleared out from since, since nineteen ninety four?
The, the library cardholder numbers? Yeah, if someone hasn't used their card in three years, it's, it's removed. So that changed several years ago because, you know, the numbers, you can say we have sixty thousand, but we have thirty five thousand active users. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good question, thank you. So far this fiscal year, which is July twenty four, until the end of my numbers at the end of February, we had ninety two thousand nine hundred and ninety four patrons visit our libraries. That's two thirds of our fiscal year, we're right on track to meet the same numbers as last year or a little bit higher. The number usually starts climbing up, especially in the Cashes area. For you from that area, you know the change once spring gets here. Also, summer learning program will kick in, and we see huge numbers during the summer with schoolchildren that are there for some reading program. So far this fiscal year, we've checked out a hundred and twenty two thousand and thirty nine items. Again, end of February, we run a fiscal year differently, and so I took the numbers from the last four months I had. We do, we have a huge turnover of materials. It includes not only books, obviously these days, but audiobooks, DVDs, e-resources. We check out telescopes, hotspots, blood pressure cuffs, jigsaw puzzles, knitting needles, you name it. The list is extensive. We have, in the two libraries, we have twenty full-time people and eight part-time people. And those staff may handle that high circulation, programming, technical services, bookkeeping, room oversight and technology maintenance. As you know, we have our own tech team, IT team that maintains all of our computers on site.
Those twenty eight individuals, are they just Jackson County or are they Jackson, Swain and Macon?
I'm sorry, the twenty, say that again, I didn't.
You had twenty full-time, eight part-time?
That's Jackson County. Yeah, all of my numbers right now are just Jackson County. Yeah, yeah, good question. There are about seventeen full-time, no, excuse me, sixteen full-time in this library unit in Silver, four in Cashes, and then two part-time people in Cashes and six part-time in Jackson County. Because we are a state-funded public library, we are allowed, we are, we're allowed to apply to join NC Cardinal. NC Cardinal, we joined in two thousand and twelve. And it moves in, as you can see from the map, a lot of North Carolina is now part of NC Cardinal. That means if you're in Beaufort County on vacation and you want to use their library, you can use it with your Jackson County library card. You could also check out a book in Beaufort and then bring it back here. And we have a mailing system that goes back and forth. In Jackson County, on top of our own book circulation, we circulate about another fifteen thousand through NC Cardinal.
I just curious, excuse me. How come some of these areas don't participate?
There's a variety of reasons. They tend to be bigger counties, some of them, like Wade, Ecklerburg. In order to be part of NC Cardinal, you have to use something called an Evergreen ILS. And some of the libraries don't want to give up their own. Some county commissioners don't choose to share. I mean, it's a county-by-county choice, and some prefer to keep their books in-house. But also, NC Cardinal started in two thousand and twelve, and each year, a few more people, a few more library systems are added. For example, this year we added Warren and, did I, Duplin, Duplin, I think I said that right. In twenty five, twenty six, we'll be adding Kirkland, Camden, Pasco, Tank, Dara and Kendra, and also the High Point Municipal Public Library. So they only add a few one at a time because it's a really big influx of information into our computer system. So we may take over the whole of North Carolina, but sure. So being part of NC Cardinal, we have eight point one million items in the catalog. The newest thing about that is that our residents here in Jackson County have access to very specialized collections that we may not be able to afford. As you know, books are expensive, especially specialized ones. They also have access to the State of North Carolina's Government and Heritage Library, which offers a real high level of assistance with family and history research. So while we can do the local family history, if a Jackson County person had, you know, family in Cumberland County, they can do research through the state library. Did you have a question? No. So with NC Cardinal, like I said, eight point one million. Our library books in our two Jackson County libraries, we have about a hundred and twenty thousand books. So you can see the, what we get as being part of the NC Cardinal system. There are two hundred and thirty four physical branches that any of our library users in Jackson County can use, six to six counties through North Carolina, and fifty four library systems, eight regional library systems, thirty six counties, six municipal and one special, which is the Government and History Library in Raleigh. One of the growing trends, obviously over the last ten years or so, maybe twelve years, has been e-resources. We do offer a wide range of ebooks, e-audiobooks, e-magazines. Our weekly app, the numbers on that grow every time a lot of people that do driving or they want to listen to a book while they're cleaning house. We also have two separate sections for children. And in two thousand and sixteen, the North Carolina State Legislature voted to fund special ebook collections specifically for school students. And, and any other homeschooling student, if they have a library card. It started with a collection for children K through four. Last year, funding made it possible to increase that collection and divide it into two platforms, one for grades K through three, and then new collection called Level Up for grades four through eight. They felt important, obviously, to keep those ages available for the right ages in the right platforms. During the last state budget development, the legislature added three hundred thousand recurring every year to keep this collection going. The newest thing about this collection is it can be used simultaneously. If a teacher owes one copy of it, these are live simultaneously on iPads, so the whole classroom can use it. All of the books are also available in, you can change the font so that if a child has dyslexia, they can use a special font to help them with their reading. About five years ago, we added Universal Class. It was actually at the request of Jackson County employees. I understand that some of the positions in Jackson County require CEUs and certificates in order to continue their work. And we came to the commissioners at the time and said that Haywood County had introduced this, and we would like to do that too. So we still offer this courses, there's hundreds of courses. You can take everything from Excel to, you know, how to start a business plan. All of those are self-paced. They are, they do receive grades from real teachers, and it is self-paced. And you can see the numbers there at the top, how popular those are. Those CEU credits are available for any employee that wants their staff to get those credits. I wasn't even watching the time when you tell me to stop. One of our primary services these days is tech help. As you can imagine, a lot of people in our community need help with technology. We offer iOS, that's the Apple product, Users Group, once a month. That class is always popular. They help people upgrade their phones, do all sorts of different things with their phones. We also have an Android Users Group equivalent, which is also once a month at a different time. We have Tech Time, we have digital navigators. This is Richard and John Modlin here. They travel to our libraries once a week, and they also teach classes at the Department on Aging and at the Senior Center in Cashes. And later this year, they will be doing a class for Circles of Jackson County. They'll be doing a six-week class to help the students in that group. So they are, Richard lives here, right behind the library. John is, he lives in Franklin. And we pay for the, this, I have a slide on the digital navigate, digital champion grant. I wrote that just over a year ago, and I won three hundred thousand dollars through that grant, and that pays for those two positions. It also, when they teach a class at the Department on Aging, the, if, if the folks that take that class show up for every six classes, they are given a Chromebook through that grant. So they are able to maintain access after the class. So that's a really big boon for a lot of people that can't afford the digital equipment. Reference services in our library, we answered a lot of questions. I, back in nineteen ninety one, this was my, this was where I started out. References changed significantly over those years. A lot of it is digital now. Over, since July first of two thousand and twenty four, we have answered in the Cashes and Jackson County libraries, fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty one reference questions. They can range from things you wouldn't believe to something as easy as how do you boil water? I mean, it just, you don't know what question you'll get on any given day. All of these stats are reported to the state each year, and so we have to keep very close counts on questions, what type of questions we do. Secondly, we also count technology assistance that the staff offer, not the digital navigators, because those are by appointment. But our staff answered three thousand three hundred and fifty one technology assistance questions. As you know, most places you apply for, even if you want, if you're a senior and you just want to apply for a job at Lowe's, greeting people or something, everything is done online. So we help a lot of people with that. Or if they have to apply for a benefit or upload something or server on hand to do that. As far as our own computer usage and wifi usage goes, computer, library computer usage, the actual computers that the library owns has decreased over the years. As you can imagine, everyone has their own iPad or cellphone or something to watch or do whatever they want. So we have cut down on the number of library computers. They have been used three thousand five, fifty five times this fiscal year. And individual wifi uses, one thousand, a hundred and twelve thousand, excuse me, five hundred and four. I will report on the three days after Helene, we were one of the very few. Our library system uses Balsam West, we never lost service, which was fantastic because a lot of people had no service. And during those three days, the twenty eighth of September through the thirtieth, we had twelve thousand seven hundred and eight individual hits at the library in Jackson. And wow, I don't know what I did there, six thousand nine hundred and twenty nine in Cashes. People were very thankful that they still had access.
Who's your provider, Balsam West?
Yes, yeah, that's a good plug for Balsam West. Programming at the libraries is increasing more and more. I, I think a lot of people just like to come out and socialize and learn something new. They learn new skills, just community with one another in some of the craft classes. We offered since, since July first last year, we have offered five hundred and forty nine library programs with a total of eight thousand seven hundred and ninety eight attendees. There is about a hundred attendees in the community room right now watching the program. So, you know, it's always, there's always something going on there. We also, obviously, the rooms are used by, for non-library programs. We had one thousand five hundred and sixty nine non-library programs so far this year, and with over ten thousand people attending those. One of our patrons said that coming to our class is an excellent way to bring people together to learn about something new or improve a skill and exchange ideas and information in a friendly setting. So we stay busy. You can see in the one picture, that is our Charlie Cart, that's our mobile kitchen, where we do a lot of cooking classes, especially for seniors, cooking for one or cooking on a budget, all sorts of. cooking on a budget, all sorts of classes there. Our new program, this beautiful picture comes from the Cachers Library. We do offer a lot of STEM programming, the um science, technology, engineering and math. We also offer Rock and Read, which is toddler storytime. We have a baby storytime, which is adorable if you ever wanna stop by and see what that looks like. Art Regis is our art classes, Lego Club is um, is always popular. Our family nights are um to encourage multi-generational uh grandparents, children, parents, all the family. We also offer music classes. The um North Carolina Symphony came and played on Saturday for the children and we have a bilingual storytime. The elusive group to get into the library are the teens. You know, if all little kids love the library and then they sort of vanish. And, and uh, but we're very lucky in Jackson County, both in Cachers and here, to have a really well-developed team programming. We offer teen time, we offer resume help for their first jobs, if they're, you know, trying to get a summer job. We help them um talk about how to interview, how to do a good interview. There's a graphic novel club, coffee chat, which, given that room full of kids coffee, I'm not sure who, whether that was a wise decision, but it is um popular. We have a game club, volunteer opportunities for the teens, so they have something to put on their resumes. And Dungeons and Dragons is popular and any art time. And you will see behind them in that picture there, we do do sign.
Do you have anything in there, excuse me again, about like maybe like drug prevention?
We have had um overall.
You got this group of young people together, I mean, it would be an opportune time to.
Mm, yeah, I can make a note of that. Um, that would probably, would probably work with the health department or one of those other groups to do that training, because that's not our specialty, but I'll make a note of that, thank you. Um, as long as the drug prevention doesn't include the coffee, cause they like the coffee. Um, but I, we made a note of that. You'll see, as I was saying on the back wall, um, we do uh baby sign language. A lot of the um storytimes, we also have some sign language in there, so babies can pick that up while they're learning to read and stuff. Adult library programs, again, book groups, author events, guest speakers. We have something called Spice Club, which we um is a big favorite in Silver. We have d- dementia support groups, so people can just come and gather and share what they need on their um, how to look after their family members and how to make sure they themselves are supported. We have creating community crafts. Those um programs, we work with local crafters, as you know, we are very fortunate in Jackson County to have an inordinate amount of crafty folks. Um, and we do programming with them once a month. Mongeong is crazy popular and Love Music is also popular as well. We're almost done. Um, library outreach, we do attend many festivals and other events so that we um, we can be out in the community, we can see what people need. Um, doing outreach lets our community know about the library and we are, we know our communities that way, we know what they are doing, we know what things they need and we um work closely with a lot of our partners. We do Greening Up the Mountains, Dia del Niño. You've seen the Storywolves in Cachers probably, I, we're working on one here in Silver, we're in Dillsborough actually. Um, so we also have off-site book groups for people that would like to sit and discuss books with a glass of wine. We can't do that on site, so we have those. And we'll do off-site computer classes at the Department on Aging and Senior Center in Cachers. We offer assistance, um, we answer any question, if we don't know the answer, we turn them over to the professionals that do, we have a close working relationship with health departments, things like that. We try and get um in all of those meetings, so we can all support each other. We do honorary services, which are very, very popular. We have wireless printing, so if you were at home um today and you had a meeting and you needed to print something out, your home printer wasn't working, which uh happens, as you know, way too much. Um, you can print it, stop by the library and pick it up, cause it will remote print from your house to our library. We have, we proctor exams, not as much as we did before COVID. Um, I think a lot of uh universities use their own proctoring software now. We offer free lunches uh working with Jackson County Public Schools and in Silver and Manor in um Cachers. This is just some of the grants we have won this fiscal year. Um, you can see thousands of dollars, they support our eresources, cause we cannot keep up with demand. Junior Library Guild, um, STEAM, the science technology, um, we buy a lot of our equipment there, a lot of the building stuff, the robotics. Um, the, we in, can increase our large print and programming and literacy, the foundation that gives ten thousand dollars um is an anonymous foundation. Programming and literacy is what they support. And periodical magazines, and as I told you before, the Digital Champion's grant, which is three hundred thousand over two years. So I've got my contact information there, do you have any other questions or suggestions or?
I got one.
Yeah.
What's the status on the, the unlocked medicine cabinet in Cachers?
Oh, it's, it's um, that was taken care of. I um, I received an email from, uh, we had all signed up to do NC Assist and the board very quickly said they were worried about over-the-counter medications. And um several of them emailed me, we had a conversation in our readership group and decided that was um something we should not do. So they've all been removed and donated to societies in the town. We still have things like Band-Aids, toothbrushes, soap, things like that, but there's no, no more oral medications. Yeah, that was taken care of, that was done Saturday as soon as we made that decision on Friday.
Just out of curiosity, why would you donate soap?
For the homeless people we have that use the library. We can give it to them if they need it.
I mean, like, why does Hira not do that?
I'm sure they do too, but a lot of people use the library. So it's just easy access, we want easy.
Like the homeless?
Um, I know that Methodist Church has a place they can use to wash up in, several of the churches do, yeah.
Are you aware that they ha- they dye their hair in those bathroom sinks?
We had a teenager do that, it was not a homeless person, it was a teenager that decided to.
A one-time deal?
It's the only time I've heard about it, yeah. A teenager did uh decide to dye their hair before they got home. And uh left a bit of a mess, but it was cleaned up and that was uh last year sometime, yeah. Well, I appreciate your time, thank you so much, sorry if I ran out, but that was a, a lot.
A lot of information.
Thank you.
Um, moving on now to Mr. King and the two hundred and fiftieth committee.
So y'all passed your resolution establishing the two-fifty committee, which is the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States. Um, I think I wanna get, break into how this is gonna be rolled out, if you watch, what's your thoughts here? Um, we can, we can look and um and publicize in the paper or on our website for membership to the committee and then y'all can choose um to create the committee. I would say either seven or nine individuals and then we'll, we'll kind of just go from there. Along with that, we'd like to go ahead and whoever's select to be on this committee would also be on the Jackson one seventy-five committee, which is also coming up in twenty twenty-six for one hundred and seventy-five years. And uh, but my, my two-fifty, we do, when you get the grant of ten thousand dollars, it can be used a lot for marketing, I think fifty percent for marketing um through different events, through, through the initiation or the first part, two thousand. Then the second part is three thousand for the marketing and events, then there's other, other categories we could use the money for. So they'll have that money to establish uh going forward for twenty twenty-five into twenty twenty-six for that committee. But just kind of wanted to, you want just uh talk about the, how to get started and at this point, we're just gonna publicize for membership and then leave it up to y'all. As far as uh the membership, I would suggest start from seven to nine people and we'll, we'll kind of go from there. If y'all have a preference on more the merrier, we could do nine, if you're up there, whatever.
I, I think seven's the ideal number, I think you get too many more individuals and it's gonna get a little bit more difficult to come to concession.
I agree.
Okay, we'll start with seven, we'll just go ahead and publicize it on our website and also put it in the paper. You may would like to participate, but when you see it, it may say two-fifty slash one seventy-five or, you know, and that, that's basically what it's about, it's for both of them. But the grant money is just for the two-fifty, we'll have to make sure, we have to keep those separate. But for the planning perspective, we can, we utilize that group for both of them.
Perfect, yeah. Awesome. Great. Um. So we do have a need to go into closed session tonight for uh legal and real property. Is, do we need for personnel or not?
Need uh business expansion, number four and number five.
Number four and number five. So a need to go into closed session for business expansion and real property. Is there a motion to enter closed session? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in closed session. We are in closed session.
Closed session, there was no action taken with no further business. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I make the motion.